We're live. So I'm going to call to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee. Today is Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank. It's a little bit of echo. Just remind people to silence their mobile devices if they have them. There is no public here for in-person, and Ms. Picard, when I saw at five, there was still no, no request for a dial-in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So we will move on to consent items. Three A, which is the minutes from April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. So entertain, entertain a motion regarding the minutes of four twenty-eight, twenty-two.
I would make a motion that we accept the minutes on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented in the packet.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Petrowski, seconded by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, five oh. We have minutes for the twenty-eighth. Thompson School donation. Dr. Mealy, do you want to present this on the screen if you don't mind? Do you want me to explain it? Do you want to, do you want to, Dr. Gilligan? Sorry?
Yeah, I would love to. This is a donation from the Thompson School, and it's for Ms. Trombley, Patty Trombley. It's a book drive. It's a donation for a thousand dollars for books for the library. Patty was a longtime teaching assistant there. Well, as principal there from oh-eight to twenty-twelve. She was just there before school, after school, very dedicated, very good at her job, loved children, loved them so much. When she retired from the Thompson as a teaching assistant, she worked at the Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center as a, you know, part-time in volunteering. So she was a remarkable teaching assistant for many, many years in the district. And I think it's wonderful that they have donated money from the Thompson, to the Thompson School, on her behalf to buy books for the library.
Okay, is there a motion?
I believe that we accept the donation.
Motion made by Ms. Wietzke, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Is there any questions or comments regarding the donation? Ms. Picard?
Yeah, my, my question is, I went looking for our naming policy because I remembered that at different times, we've had different things come up, and I know we have approved some plaques in the past. I don't think there have been any at Thompson. So I just didn't know if we had looked into that, if this is going to include a plaque. Of course, we want to accept this donation. Of course, we want to honor this person. I just want to make sure that if we have a policy that we're following it.
So this is just the donation of books? It's not a cart or things of that nature, which I think would be placable?
Yeah, it's, they're accepting books, books or monetary donations to purchase books that will be part of a collection that, you know, the books may have donated by, you know, on, in behalf of Patty Trombley.
So it says in their thing, so the dedication of a book corner in her name seems a great way to keep her memory alive. So if the book corner is going to have some sort of plaque or something, I just want to make sure that we can, that we can approve that and that that's something that we'll be able to do in support if that's part of the plan.
We can double-check that. To my understanding, there's no plaque at this time. I think that they were going to house the books donated in a particular corner, and I thought her name would be maybe on the inside cover page oftentimes you see, donated by so-and-so. Pretty frequent, pretty common practice in libraries.
Very beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I would have is a small housekeeping thing, and it just, on the cover sheet, it says item four B donation, and it should be three B. So other than that?
Good catch.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll do a roll call vote here. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, five oh. We are thankful for the Trombley family and the Thompson School with books for the memory of Patty Trombley. Thank you very much. All right, I thought I saw students before. I thought I saw Ethan.
Both Ethan and Lindsay are here.
Okay.
And we should do a virtual roll call so that, or roll call so that everybody who's in the meeting is named in the session.
Would you like to go first with your team, Ms. Picard? Okay, so the school committee is present with Ms. Picard being remote. Dr. Gilligan, do you want to identify from your team?
Yeah, so present in the room tonight is Dr. James Mealy, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and calling in tonight is our Executive Director for Special Education, Massey Bakusi. Ms. Marks will not be in attendance in regular session tonight, and I believe we have Ethan and Lindsay, although I think we're on a different screen view than I'm typically used to. I know they're behind Helen somewhere.
They're both nodding and can't wait to speak.
All right.
Yeah, we don't see that view here with us, so, okay. All right, all right, Lindsay, Ethan.
All right, I would just like to start us off with a reminder to seniors to please check your mailbox, as there might be a little special something in there, an invitation to the NAS Scholarship Night specifically might be awaiting you. So please don't forget to check your physical mailbox, not your email. So that is to seniors. And student council elections were just held today, and we heard some amazing speeches. So stay tuned for an update of who will be on our new board. Ethan and I had our runs. We're done. We're graduating. And in addition, elections for class office are also going to be happening, and submissions for forms will be due by next week as of Friday, and election, the election date will be held on June first. So please stay tuned, and if you have any questions, please reach out to Ms. Rumiyan in room two thousand twenty-three, or look to see the posters in the halls. There's also an update on Asian night, which I believe I said would be Friday, May thirteenth, but that's a correction because it's on the twentieth. It's a celebration dinner hosted by the Asian Pacific Indian Club at the high school on May twentieth from four to eight in the cafe. We will be having Representative Trem Wen speaking as our, as our speaker. Dance events, a fashion show, and raffle prizes will go towards supporting an Asian-owned local business. And also something really exciting, Vex Robotics held at Dallas, Texas this year with our school teams eight-five-six-eight A. Congratulations to Zoe Levin, Luke Ralph, Jonathan Hale, Keenan Goslin, and Daniel, Daniel Mittelman on their judges award. And congrats to Mike Motherway for working alongside this group and allowing for this to happen. They're nurturing the robotics program. And also big congrats because they are the first North Andover team to win an award at world's level. This Wednesday is Geography Night at the Middle School Gym from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. I highly recommend that you show up because it's just a great event to have fun with your friends, and it's one of the best events that the middle school has to offer. And just a reminder to check out NAS future plans, as there was a huge influx of commits. It's awesome to see where people are going. Hats off to my fellow senior classmates who have worked so hard to get into the colleges of their dreams and their career paths. Jazz Night is this Friday from seven PM to nine PM at the North Andover High School cafeteria. It's a really a fun event with amazingly talented musicians. I highly recommend, if you have not gone, that you do check it out. Tuesday tomorrow marks the dreaded day for third and fifth graders as they begin session one of their math MCAS. Thursday marks the start of session one math MCAS for fourth graders, and my recommendation to you as a former MCAS victim, I mean test taker, is to try to get a good night's rest. So if you're staying up watching this, you better head to sleep soon.
In addition, senior prom tickets will be being sold this week before and after school, Tuesday through Friday every day, but they will not be on sale after this. They will be on sale for eighty dollars each. Please ask Mrs. Daly or Mrs. Rastin if you're looking to buy a ticket. In addition, the North Andover High School bands will be having a concert on May nineteenth in the evening, I believe at seven o'clock in the auditorium. More details will be discussed over the announcements as we near that date, and that will be a Thursday evening. On a similar note, the North Andover High School Choirs will be having their spring concert on May twenty-sixth, the following Thursday, in the evening. It will be at seven in the auditorium as of now, and again, more details will follow as we near that date. Another thing to quickly talk about is students are currently taking their AP exams. Good luck to everyone on those. Just, just a few more days, and then we can all take a deep breath. An interesting thing, the last advisory of the year has passed last Wednesday. This is the first of the seniors' last, as my advisor said. And the final coffeehouse of the year will be on Friday, June tenth, the week before school lets out for freshmen through juniors. Any performers are invited to sign up once that form comes out. There'll be much more information to come, including the theme and the time and all that, so please check the North Andover High School Choirs Instagram page, and especially listen to school announcements and look around for posters for more news on that once we get closer to that date, Friday, June tenth. In addition, the National Honor Society elections were recently held for the future officers of the class of two thousand twenty-three. We'll try to update you all once we learn the results of these elections. Tonight, we have a big list of athletic events at home at North Andover High School. We have the JV girls softball team, the JV boys baseball team, and the varsity boys baseball team playing. And away, we have the freshman girls softball, varsity boys tennis, freshman boys baseball, JV boys volleyball, varsity boys volleyball, and varsity boys lacrosse teams will also be playing. Good luck to all of our impressive athletes tonight. Also, the North Andover High School Boys Baseball Team had a final score of six to three yesterday. Because both the freshman and varsity teams played yesterday, we don't know which team this was, although I choose to believe it was both who won. Principal Jackson said this is a win for the moms. Unfortunately, because we had very little time to pull off a senior musical, the North Andover High School Drama Guild will not be performing a senior musical this year. However, we will hold an event for the seniors to have one last great experience with the guild before they graduate. And a couple of final reminders to seniors. Seniors, please check your emails just in general. There'll be more information regarding graduation, senior week, and final preparations to leave North Andover High School. And the final thing we have to say tonight is, seniors, please return all outstanding books and materials, materials you have borrowed from the school. This includes any textbooks or any English books that you haven't yet returned. You will need to pay, you will need to pay fees, excuse me, if these are not returned. That is all for our report tonight. Are there any questions?
So, great job. We'll start virtually, if that's okay. Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate what was said, and I, and I just have to ask Lindsay some of your thoughts on, on MCAS. You said you were a victim. I don't know if you were just messing around, or if you really have strong feelings against MCAS in some way.
I'm sure you're well aware, but for high schoolers, it was optional to take MCAS this year, and I was just too traumatized to do it again. I opted out. I had enough. But truly, I, I stuck to a regimen of having pasta at night because I read somewhere in a magazine that is good for your brain. So I was like, I always ate pasta the night before MCAS, and then eggs in the morning. So I think I'm either traumatized from my routine or the test itself.
Well, thank you for taking it, because I do know that our educators do feel like they get valuable information that can help them inform their teaching practices. And I know my own children, when they were younger, particularly liked taking the, the reading MCAS. They liked some of the reading selections, and in fact, were able to pick up the books that the readings came out of and really enjoyed doing that. I, I totally get it. It's, it's a different sort of thing, and it's been a tough couple of years. So I appreciate your input on that, and thank you both very much.
Awesome. Ms. Wietzke?
No, thank you so much.
Mr. Hicks?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Ms. Petrowski?
Nope, I don't have any questions. Did you guys decide your, where you're going? Did you put, I, I, sorry, sorry, but did I, did we miss that? I'm, do you want to share? You don't have to share.
Well, I think I saw Lindsay on NAMs, or NAHA's Future Plans, did I not? Maybe a day or two ago?
Yes, you were rep on that. So if you're curious about where I'm going, you should check out the page.
Well played. Okay.
And I, I don't remember if I saw Ethan.
Sorry, and because I still have to update my NAS Future Plans page, I'll just tell you right now, I plan on attending the University of Massachusetts Amherst. I'll be studying biomedical engineering. So that's pretty exciting.
Congratulations.
Excellent. I feel like that was breaking news, so that was pretty exciting.
Congratulations.
All right.
Mr. McDevitt, is this the last time we'll have these young people with us, or do we get one more meeting out of them?
We have at least one more meeting, yeah. Yep, so, all right, all right. Awesome, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gilligan, we'll move over to the health report, superintendent's report and the health report.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm certainly going to miss Ethan and Lindsay. I got to tell you, they are so thorough that they cover everything. I do see the chair of the committee and myself crossing off some of our announcements and updates. I mean, they cover just about everything possible. It might take the new folks a little bit longer to get, you know, that detailed, but two great kids, and I will see if I can get on one of my kids' Instas tonight to see where Lindsay's going.
The suspense.
The suspense is killing me.
Okay. So Dr. Mealy, we have the health update. So the health update today, five-nine-twenty-two, we have approximately sixty-seven cases, and that is up. It's been, it's been climbing. We do meet weekly, we have a weekly scheduled meeting with our task force, and so, you know, talking with Brian LaGrasse, talking with Cheryl Barzac, the number is up, but, you know, for the number being up, the cases are particularly mild, a lot of, very few symptoms. And I think, you know, more importantly, as Cheryl mentioned to me, you know, just, I spoke to her just prior to the meeting, a couple hours before the meeting, she couldn't make it tonight. It, these are family cases, so we're not seeing this necessarily at the school. And it's something we're monitoring very closely. We have a meeting again with our task force this week, so we'll continue to watch it. And we also have a DPH call later in the week. We met with DESE last week. We had a quick call with Jeff Riley, the commissioner, and, you know, he was saying that they thought that they would see a slight increase. They're seeing the same thing, very mild symptoms, asymptomatic folks. They think the folks, the medical folks at DESE and the folks they work with, you know, the doctors out of Boston, they think they'll start to see this go down this week. And they were talking about potential swell, maybe, you know, later in the summer, it could pick up a little bit, but they're not seeing that as a surge or anything like we had in January. So, there's the COVID-19 dashboard. As you see, we had a, quite a run for a little bit with the lower numbers, but we are seeing, you know, we have had this increase. And this is the weekly new COVID cases over time. And then last but not least, we have the vaccination rate. And you can see where we're at for students and staff, you know, and again, I'll talk to Cheryl, but the, the student vaccination, we have all the students in there. You know, the staff vaccination, we have not updated since, we don't have their information necessarily since prior, right prior to New Year, end of the, yeah, it looks like November, so. And we'll have our COVID task force meeting again this week, and I'm looking forward to it. It's something we're keeping an eye on, and although the numbers are up, you know, it was not something at this time that has caused overly, overly concerned. But as always, you know, the health and safety of our kids always comes first, and if there's an issue, we'll certainly raise it here.
Any questions for Dr. Gilligan? Ms. Picard?
No, I've also said I had a nice talk with Dr. Gilligan and Nurse Barzac this afternoon, and I appreciated the additional information.
Ms. Wietzke?
No questions, thanks.
Mr. Hicks?
Can you just explain, Mr., Dr. Gilligan, what you meant by family cases and not school?
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the things we've seen as a big trend over time is oftentimes, though, these numbers are really, they represent cases of our students, but oftentimes, these students, you know, it's, and when we first started out, you know, a long time ago, and things, and think of how far we've come and how much things have changed, you know, with variants and deltas. And I remember when I closed the high school for a day with fourteen cases, I think, we had a small little group cluster. But the family cases are, so A, these are all the reports of kids. They might not even step foot in school. They've tested positive at home with one of our test kits, or they've, you know, had some symptoms and tested, and they've stayed out. But what, what we have seen is folks, I think, that's understandable, they're not necessarily catching it at school. They're catching it at home from family members in tight quarters. And a lot of asymptomatic, you know, well, very mild symptoms are asymptomatic. So family, not school spreading at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
And did you say those, like, it's kind of trending across the state the same way? And when you had those conversations with Desi and their health task force, did they, like, kind of give a, like, an idea of why? Like, are we, like, what causes these little bubbles?
Well, I'm a doctor. I'm not that kind of doctor, although I did have someone at graduation that wanted me to look at contact dermatitis last year on the skin. I said, you have to see a physician, MD. But no, they, they did chime in, in all seriousness, that, you know, there's different, we've had different variants, and this has been for kids anyway, and a lot of our kids have vaccinated. It's been a mild variant. We're in a much different place than we were. We're Delta. You know, so we've seen this uptick. They think it's trending down, and again, I'll be interested for Cheryl to attend the DPH call tomorrow, and then we have our task force meeting on Thursday, just kind of where we are. I'm not sure anyone can ever predict, but some of these variants, they say, you know, will mutate or, you know, slightly change over time. And, you know, there's, you know, we have a lot of fully vaccinated folks, so, and I'm not sure, Cheryl's not here, so I'd have to check on the, the under five. You know, I know that there was one of the vaccines they were looking to approve, you know, and the fourth shot, you know, will probably, you know, be coming up for different folks, depending on your age group. I think it's over fifty at this time.
Yep. And I think it's important to note, to note, too, that these cases, like you said, are, because we have these home kits, are probably not, do we have an, do we know, are they all not stepping foot in school like they're testing prior to, or do we know if there's a, if there's a percentage of them that have been tested at school and gone home versus, I'm just curious, like, to see, just to put, like, minds at ease about, you know, it's different than what it was when we had higher numbers before. Those are, you know, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, I think we were up well over three hundred in January.
Right.
And we were still in school.
Sure.
But, you know, I, I think the difference we, we see here is we have kids that report. One of the things that people have said, and it's, you know, that's why every city and town, you'll see a school dashboard and a town dashboard or a city dashboard. They don't necessarily always match up. The city has data that comes in, you know, from the Board of Health or the state, and we have data that comes in. The one thing our parents are really good at is reporting things to nurses.
Right.
And to our office, and they've been on the front lines all year. So as a result, you know, we get that information in, and then work with the families.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think that's really important for people to understand. I know that was helpful for me to think about, because when you see the numbers, it looks a little alarming, but then when you think of, well, they haven't actually been in school, that makes a difference.
Right.
When I talked to Nurse Barzac this afternoon, she said that she is still getting reports if people have testing at Lawrence General Hospital. They are still doing testing in school. They are still providing home tests. So it's a combination of home tests and places like Lawrence General Hospital and tests that happen in school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Helen.
Anything else, Dr. Gilligan?
Yeah, so just a couple things. Last week was, you know, Teachers Week, and it was terrific to see all of our different levels and PTOs, you know, different folks support our educators and our staff for all they've done. I think sometimes folks don't realize, you know, it's a bit of a challenge on everyone the last couple of years, but, you know, last year might have been even a little bit, this year has been in some ways harder than last year because we're back and we're, we're in this full routine. So hats off to the work that they do each and every day, all of our educators and staff on behalf of our kids, because it's truly remarkable. I do want to mention, speaking of Nurse Bazak and her team, this week, Wednesday, May eleventh, that's National School Nurses Day, and, you know, they have, from day one, educated folks about COVID, put all the mitigation strategies in place, collected all the testing information, you know, worked with educating our kids on how to stay safe and our staff, and they've done a tremendous job keeping our student, staff, and faculty safe on top of their traditional duties. I think we saw the presentation last time, you know, you wouldn't believe all the visits, you know, and until Cheryl started presenting that years back, I'm not sure when she started, I couldn't believe the amount of number of visits nurses see, and that's, so that's everything from, like, the ice packs for the kids at recess or Band-Aid to, you know, serious injuries, to chronically ill children, to kids with diabetes, and to students who, you know, have to have regular distribution of medication, students who have a PRN or as needed. They're just absolutely remarkable. I am so proud of them, forever grateful for them, and, you know, they continue to work and what's in the best interest of our kids, and they're the best. So if you get a chance, you know, one of the best things. Someone said to me last week, what's the best way to honor a teacher? And I know, when I was a principal, I even got a gift or two in Teacher Week. But oftentimes, a note, just a note, you know, or an email to them means a lot. So hats off to the nurses here in North Andover, tremendous job, and we'll be celebrating them on Wednesday, and. Okay. I also have a really excellent announcement. Meg Pinkston, Ms. Meg Pinkston, a notice went home today to the high school families because she's a high school administrator now officially, permanently. She will become our new Director of Guidance. She has big shoes to fill with Mr. Nugent. You guys saw his enthusiasm just for athletics. You should have seen what it was like with guidance for twenty years. She's awesome. She's, you know, and, and of a native. We don't hold that against her, but an assumption college graduate. She has a degree in counseling from Boston University. She's been with us for a very, very long time. She's done a tremendous job this year, and we're really looking forward to welcoming her on permanently, and we've just posted for her job because she was on a leave for the year as the interim, and, you know, we actually had an interim in that position. So we will post inside, outside, you know, we run these searches, and we try to cast a wide net. I think it benefits everyone, but we'll, we'll get that done. So I'm thrilled for Ms. Pinkston. And last but not least, you should get the school newsletter tomorrow, you know, the nightly news will be out, the superintendent's newsletter. I'm very excited about it, and that will go home tomorrow. And I just want to say, you know, thank you to Cindy Parrott. A lot of folks don't know who Cindy is. She's the Assistant to Lorene Marks, our Assistant Superintendent, and she coordinates this, puts a lot of effort into it, and it's really grown. If you go back and look in the archives of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, it was, you know, a page and a half, sometimes two. There's a lot of information, so check it out. Tomorrow, I'll be writing a little bit about what to expect at town meeting next week with the different warrant articles. So that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
All right. Any additional questions for Dr. Gilligan? All right, seeing none, hearing none, okay. A little ahead of schedule here, but we'll move on to the chair's report. At our last meeting, I updated you guys that I was going to be meeting with town moderator Mark DeSalvo and Melissa Murphy Rodriguez and some of the chairs from the other boards regarding the warrant, just kind of going through what's on the warrant, the order. There's, you know, for example, a number of things that are consent agenda, and those will probably be taken, you know, somewhat as a group and perhaps a little bit out of order. So Mark really just kind of went through what the process was. We are indoors at the Kosher Field House, North Andover High School, six thirty on the seventeenth. I always want to say seven o'clock, but it's six thirty. There, obviously, it's limited a little bit in terms of parking, but they're running shuttles from the middle school. shuttles from the middle school up. So, there's welcome, we welcome everyone, and I do think if you're going to do any form of childcare, you have to pre-register for that as well. The other thing that we were going to do was, Mark, for probably about ten years now, does a on-the-warrant type of conversation. So, it's recorded by NACAM. It was supposed to be on Monday, couple of scheduling conflicts. We recorded it Friday afternoon, I think maybe three thirty, four o'clock. So, that was recorded. It's really conversational and, you know, probably, I don't know, forty minutes or so, I'd say, somewhere around there. It was recorded on Friday. It should be on NACAM as well. So, it's really just Mark asking questions about, like, you know, the school building projects, you know, capital funds, you know, different things that were kind of going on. Royal Crest, obviously, is there as well. So, not too long of a show. NACAM is showing it as well as, I think it's available on YouTube as well. So, and I think I heard it went up for viewing today. Today was the first day it was viewable. Did you hear that, Dr. Gilligan?
I didn't hear that, but I will speak with Michelle, I believe that's true. I will talk with Michelle McQ and see if we can get that tomorrow, too.
Okay. We may want to just add that link.
Yeah, we'll add that to the newsletter.
If we can.
Absolutely.
And I do, I can't read that. Dr. Mealy, can you? What?
Friday.
It went up on Friday? That was some fast editing there, Bill. Thank you. So, a couple of things, just, you know, in town meeting, you know, I, I think you guys all know it, it's somewhat overshadowed by some conversations with school building projects, facility master plan and Royal Crest. But this is the one time, the one opportunity where we vote on how we're spending the money for the town. Hundred and twenty-five million dollars allocations for schools, police, fire, you know, all of the different departments that are there as well. So, I do encourage everyone to be at the high school on Tuesday night. So, and next, I'll just turn it over. Ms. Petrowski, anything on the Hall of Fame?
So, we did get another nomination in, and we are just in the middle of putting together or organizing the committee to have a meeting so that we can review the applicants and then make our recommendation.
Okay.
So, we should have that ready within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, perfect. And then I think the final thing, and Dr. Gilligan stole this a little bit, but I follow a number of the schools on Twitter and just different social media, and really, a huge thank you, not just to the PTOs in town, but the parents and the communities and the businesses who really put out amazing spreads and thank yous to all of our teachers, faculty and staff over the past week. I mean, there were businesses who said, you know, if you went in with an ID, you got a free coffee, or you did something else. So, I just think it shows the support in the community, of the community for all of our teachers. And thank you for the PTOs to help organizing. I know there were brunches and candy bars and snack bags and all of that amazing stuff. So, well done, and thank you. And we'll go over now to Dr. Mealy with, this could be our last Facilities Master Plan before a vote. It won't be our last presentation for sure, but last one before we start the ball rolling officially.
The home stretch.
Yeah, well, the beginning of the home stretch.
Exactly. So, I thought, if there is anybody left out there who might choose tonight, who hasn't heard this, I would review the process of how we got here and what to expect when you get to town meeting next Tuesday. So, as you all know, but somebody out there might not, a space capacity subcommittee was formed. Holly was the chair. We had representatives from every school, and we met for months, and they were all public meetings. We have on our website the notes and the agendas from those meetings, all the data and information that's available on the webpage. We did a presentation in April. We surveyed the community and staff. We held public hearings and got the community input as much as we could. And we generated a final report to the school committee in June of twenty-one, and the school committee voted in September of what recommendation to send to the task force, the Facilities Master Plan Two Task Force. And then after that, we held more public forums, eight of them in all, between October and December, and we've had a couple more since then. CAM, we had a question and answer session. Dr. Gilligan and the town manager went to the senior center. So, we've been, you know, making this as public as we can. Dr. Gilligan, you look like you want to say something.
And the PTO presidents.
And the PTO presidents, yep. And so, what all that means, there are multiple projects, but the ones that are important for this coming town meeting are the middle school in Kittredge. That process, as I said, we identified the key aspects of the school projects and conducted research, identified as many of the possible options as we could to vet them, involved the community in the process, and solicited input and feedback. Our kind, our mantra was that we didn't want to get to the end of the process and have somebody say, have you thought of? And we hadn't. So, that was our goal throughout the whole process, to identify all of the possible options, vet them as best we can, and make the best recommendation that was indicative of the community and what the community wanted to see. And we presented those to the school committee, and the school committee made the final recommendation. So, what it entails as far as Facilities Master Plan Two is three real main categories, building conditions, educational delivery and enrollment projections. Regarding building conditions, not surprisingly, these are our oldest schools. They're in need of renovation and code compliance and really educational space. So, we're going to renovate them. We're going to address the ADA and code requirements that were grandfathered in but are not meeting right now, and eliminate finally the portable classrooms that are well past their expected life. As far as educational delivery goes, we have, we're able to ensure equity in our elementary schools better and provide needed support spaces at those schools, and provide spaces that are more in line with 21st century learning and allow us to impact class size. And then the enrollment projections, this has come up a lot lately because of developments, but we factored those in. We looked at a long period of time to determine the average growth in North Andover, and so we have built that in for years to come to be able to meet that growth. And again, we, we saw this last time, the four projects, the first four projects will have no impact on the tax rate. And the first two there, you'll see are the ones that will be voted on at town meeting, the middle school design and Kittredge School Design for FY twenty-three, and then anticipating construction, hopefully to begin in FY twenty-four for the middle school and FY twenty-five for the Kittredge, and the reason being that as part of the MSBA program, it takes a little longer to get to starting construction. And again, these will not impact the tax rate, which will be reviewed by the town manager at the town meeting. The middle school, as we said, renovating the interior and exterior, upgrading all of the systems, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, adding classrooms and support spaces, and as we've said before, it gets done safely and still allowing for education to happen because we do it in phases. Normally, in most projects, you will build the new section, move students into that section, allowing you to free up an older section for renovation, and then you go through the building that way. And the same with Kittredge. In this case, though, it's, it's new construction, so the orange you see there would be the new construction, and then that would allow us to move the students into there and demo the existing building, which you can see as, as number two on this picture. And again, just to reiterate, no impact on the tax rate, although they show the five years, that's going forward. There's no impact on the tax rate from these projects. Later projects could have an impact, but they'll be voted on individually. So, people will be able to get to decide if they want to do those then. So, what's next? Town meeting happens next Tuesday. The only vote at town meeting will be design and funding for middle school in Kittredge, essentially kicking off those two projects. Each project needs individual approvals as we move through the Facilities Master Plan and gets revisited each year as part of town manager's capital improvement budget. So, the action taken at town meeting this year will not cause any increase in FY twenty-three or beyond for tax impact. What they look like is you go to town meeting next Tuesday, particularly look for these regarding these projects. Article fourteen is the normal capital improvement plan that gets voted on with all of the capital projects, whether it's design or construction in one group, and all the funding, whether you're borrowing or, or using free cash that's being reallocated, they all get voted together. And this is what it looks like. Article fourteen appropriation, capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-three, and a yes vote would approve all of the capital projects on the list, including design for Kittredge and design for the middle school. And then the other article, because we have, we're working with the MSBA for the Kittredge, we also have to approve this warrant article, number twenty-five, which commits us to making the funds available for basically the feasibility study portion of the project. And that's when the public, the community, the staff, all are providing input into what the final product is going to be and what we really need. So, this one's important as well. It, it shows MSBA that we are committed and is a really big step in making that happen with them. And that's it. Any questions?
Virtually there. I don't think I see a question there, Ms. Picard?
No, thank you. I really appreciate the, the update that you have in that presentation. I would love to see that online as, as an update to what we have online.
It will be.
Okay. Any questions from the room?
Dr. Mealy, the, I mean, you took it down, but the Kittredge picture?
Yep.
Just so folks at home get an understanding, how many classrooms are currently in Kittredge? And how many could the new building potentially have?
So, right now, the capacity, we have twelve classrooms, although not all of those were originally classrooms. But our capacity is about two-twenty, right about where we are, and capacity for the new school will be double that, will be four-forty to four-fifty.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And that, it's, not only is it critical in this process because we get the MSBA funding, which is probably about fifty percent, we don't have to see a lot of inflation because the project's upfront, but also by building that excess capacity into the first project, it makes it a lot, us a lot more flexible to manage the other renovation projects as well.
And the burden it takes off the taxpayer in town by getting that type of reimbursement upfront. It's pretty remarkable we're accepted into this eligibility period. It's absolutely on a first try, so.
So, I'm sorry, did you say how many classrooms there would be with the renovation?
So, we're talking, it's going to be between twenty and twenty-five classrooms in the new building.
It's not designed yet either, so we don't know.
Right.
In theory.
Based on four-fifty capacity, it should be between twenty and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else there, Helen? Okay, perfect. All right. No old business from last meeting. So, we are way ahead of schedule here. So, we are going to go into, excuse me, old business, first reading, which, I'm sorry? What did I say? Did I say, did I say old again? Sorry. So, new business, first, new business A, nine A, which is a first reading and a request to suspend the rules for town meeting warrant article twenty-five. I know that Dr. Mealy's going to present this. One of the things that I'd just like to say is, town council has basically, I think, written this. We submitted it to the MSBA. It has to be basically approved by them for verbiage as well, and then kind of come back. So, that's why this is a little bit later in terms of timing, just because of kind of going back and forth with that. So, little context, anything?
Just to add, it's nice to have at town meeting. It, it won't be in the book, but it will be projected on the screen that select board, finance committee and school committee all recommend favorable action on this warrant article.
And as, you know, the veterans of town meeting know, and Mr. McDavid could tell you, it's, it's pretty common sometimes we'll have something projected on the screen where there's favorable action. I think one of the things, too, besides the review, we weren't notified until March second that we're accepted into the process.
Right. All right. So, the first possible action would be a motion to suspend the rules and to approve the article. So, the first one would be a motion to suspend the rules, if there is one.
So moved.
Excuse me. So, motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Ms. Petrowski, sorry. Swallow drawn. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, five oh, we are suspending the rule. So, now, is there a motion to vote on the article as presented in the packet and town warrant for May seventeenth?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we vote favorable action on article twenty-five as presented as a warrant article.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Picard?
Second.
I don't know, need a thumb war or something there. We're going to give that to Mr. Hicks. It's a motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion on the article? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Mr. Petrowski, I was going to say Picard again.
It's okay, yes.
Yes, and the chair votes yes, five oh. All right. I don't know where my head is. All right, there we go. Okay, so now we will go back to more traditional order here. So, one, first reading, nine B, school choice for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. There we go. Dr. Mealy, are you presenting that? There you are. Do you want to speak to this, Dr. Gilligan?
Sure. School choice is something that school committees have to vote on every year, and this will be the first reading at our May twenty-fourth meeting. We'll have a public hearing at that time, and then take a, close the public hearing and have a second reading. So, we have to, by June first, put in whether we want to participate in school choice or not. So, what school choice is, is where we could tuition in students from other communities into our school. You have to be on a list. Sometimes it's just by grade level, depending if you have availability that's open. We have never participated in school choice. I think if you look at Facilities Master Plan Two, there's a reason that they're very heavy school projects as we try to tackle class size and appropriate spaces. And so, you know, our recommendation and my recommendation at this time is that due to the high enrollment numbers, the administration will not, will, the administration will be recommending the school committee vote not to participate as a receiving district in the school choice program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And once we put in with DESE on June first, DESE then creates a master list that they publish publicly. So, say you lived in, let me say, I think Georgetown and Haverly might have school choice. So, you know, if you live in, hypothetically, they've been on the list in the past.
Georgetown, I remember is on the list.
You know, and Haverly had some grade levels open, not, and, you know, so if you lived in Georgetown, and said I wanted to go to Haverly Public Schools, you could apply and go to school there, and they would tuition you in there. For us, I mean, we've historically had very high class size, not the appropriate spaces. Thus, all the work we're doing to alleviate those problems. So, I can't remember us ever participating in school choice.
Any questions for Dr. Gilligan?
Would the district have the ability to determine how many seats? And like, we could say yes to, like, X number of kindergartners or Y number of bill scores or something like that?
Districts typically do grade levels. They don't, you don't, it's not by seat number. It would say, okay, we'd, we'd be willing to take on the list. You know, North Andover has grade two, six and seven open.
So, I actually, I know Ms. Picard has a question, but I didn't think we could restrict it by grade. I thought, because I remember a conversation years ago that perhaps the high school could accommodate, for example, I'll just make this up, twenty students, but we could not accommodate them at the elementary. And if we did it for one grade or one...
Building.
Building, that, thank you. We had to do it for all of them. I didn't think you, did something change with Desi that you could go by grade?
Not that I'm aware of. It's always been, you know, it could, we've just always voted no, because we've had no space. space across the board and it continues to be a challenge. Um, I, I have, I believe, seen it by grade, but I, I can check. You know, this is the first reading. Uh, I, I believe I have seen it, uh, unless that's changed, but certainly can find out.
Okay. I, I think I saw Ms. Picard with her hand up before, so.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, as we, as we do these buildings, um, and we're planning for the long term, we're planning that, um, these renovations that we do and these increased capacity, um, will serve us for 20 years or so and it's going to take us some number of years, um, to get there. At some point in the future, we may have excess capacity. Um, for example, at the Kittredge School, it may be that on, you know, the first year that the Kittredge School is open, we don't need to double the number of students there. We might need to, I don't know. Um, not by our enrollment projections, but if we're doing, um, some, some building projects at other schools or, um, but if we do have capacity at the Kittredge School, if we were to vote, um, to, to participate in school choice and receive students, those students coming in would pay tuition to North Andover. So that could, that could add to our, um, to our operating budget, is that right?
Not necessarily, well, not indirectly. Um, so it, it is a great question. Um, it will be part of the equation going forward, that we will have excess capacity because we're building for future, um, not right when these projects are done. Um, but it's also continued upon whatever Dr. Gilligan finds out with regards to, um, being able to have it for certain grades because we still have a very large middle school and that will always be part of the equa- equation as well. But the, there'll, there'll be capacity and if a student does tuition in, um, they become, uh, we get credited for that student with regards to chapter 70 funding, which comes directly to the town and indirectly to the school department. That's how it works.
And in the future year, right? It doesn't happen in the same year that it, that...
Correct.
The student is into his district. Okay, so that's, that's helpful to know. Um, and then once a student were part of the North Andover Public Schools, say they were accepted in grade, you know, four, would we then tell them that they couldn't be part of North Andover when they got to grade six if there wasn't space there? How does that work?
Could be if the committee voted not to be school choice, right?
Mm-hmm. It depends on whether we participate in school choice and, um, I actually, Helen, this may be a little bit helpful. Um, when I was thinking of grade levels, it kind of goes back, you jogged my memory, Ms. Hicks. We have never, um, participated in school choice in the 24 years I've been here. Um, but, um, but we have to fill out a survey for participation, whether we want to or not by June 1st. Um, you know, and the inter-district school choice law, uh, chapter 76, section 12B requires that all districts accept incoming students, uh, school choice students unless the school committee votes not to participate or limits the number of incoming students in particular grades. So I think when I said grade levels, that's what I've seen on the master list. I often get calls, not anymore superintendent, when I was assistant superintendent, from people from surrounding communities saying, oh, could you take one of my students? We really want to come to North Andover. And I'd say, we don't participate, but here's how you find the list. And I would kindly send it on to them and I remember seeing the list, so, um, that's how it reads.
So, so again, for this year, it's, it's clear, this isn't something we're going to be doing, but we, we might want to get educated on this as we go along so that we have a really full understanding of it because our students can, can go as school choice students to other communities. Say if they wanted to go to, you know, make up a, make up a community that's receiving students, um, I, I would want to know if that, you know, once a student becomes part of North Andover, if they stay or if they are only accepted year by year. So it's, it's interesting to learn more. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's year by year. Uh, but we'll find out for sure.
And those seats change year by year, uh, in districts too. That's what I've seen.
All right. Questions from the room?
No.
All right. Perfect. All right. Stay tuned for public hearing. Public hearing, the meeting within a meeting, right? Um, sorry, my pages are off. Um, okay, first reading for the transportation contract extension. We go, Dr. Mealy has it presented. Dr. Mealy, you want us, walk us through this?
Yes, we are going into the fifth year. Originally we had contracted with NRT. Um, we've had them for a while now, uh, for a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. We extended last year and we're recommending that we extend again this year. It would be extremely difficult to, and it's not a good environment to be going out to bid, um, for transportation right now. So having another year, I, I was going to say it wouldn't hurt, but I'll just say it is probably going to be better than, um, the environment right now. Uh, so we're recommending that we extend for the fifth year of that contract and then we will have to during this coming year, prepare a bid and go out to bid, uh, for a, a new contract. Given the budget approval, um, we do not need to raise the fees, uh, for riders, paid riders. Uh, if somebody out there is looking to, um, have their child transported next year and pay for that, uh, if they do so before June 30th, uh, sign up with our transportation coordinator, uh, they pay $330 for the year. And if they do it after June 30th, it's $360, which it has been for quite a while now.
Questions from the committee? Uh, so, quick thing I might just add, uh, when we vote for, next time, just informational for people in town, um, we provide busing for students up to grade six as part of the busing fee, or a part of, part of busing, there is no busing fee, uh, grade six and below.
Well, so...
Unless they're within two miles, right?
So we provide transportation for students outside of two miles.
Okay.
Up to the sixth grade. Anybody over the sixth grade who wants transportation will, will have to pay. And then any one up to the grade six who lives, um, inside of the two miles could pay.
Okay. So I think when we add that, when we vote on it next time, I think we want to probably add that verbiage in just so that people understand what, what's going up.
Sure.
And can we just, can I just ask, is there, um, I feel like this has been asked before, um, if a student qualifies for free or reduced lunch, is there a discount on the bus as well?
Yes.
Do we need to note that anywhere or is that just common knowledge? I feel like it might not be common.
Right, well, and apparently, as on the really emphasizing that as well, but we also have always emphasized during administration. Um, and Erica reaches out to all families and, um, to have them sign, you know, app, put in an application and in that process, there's a box they can check that, um, transportation, um, community programs and athletics, uh, will be able to provide you with the same discount that you're eligible for.
Okay, perfect.
And that puts us in compliance with federal regulations and that's made a huge difference. So that shift...
I thought that for the last couple of years though, we have not been collecting, um, applications for free and reduced lunch because we've had the free meals for all students. So if that's not happening again next year, we'll want to make sure that that information is, is particularly clear, um, from something other than Erica because we'll have funding for free meals for all students.
Yeah, and this year we're back to normal. It's, it seems, Jim, that we're back at our regular pace, uh, the regular, you know, mix that we have. I think it was the year, remember, we had to limit busing, um, during COVID.
Yeah, I'll double check with Erica, but I think she still has them fill out the, the form so that she knows once, because there was no, there's no guarantee this year, um, yet that they're going to be free. So she's, she's usually on that, but I'll, I'll make sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I can tell you from personal experience, if you are after June 30th, um, they charge you the 360 school committee member or not. So, uh, it's the same rules for everybody.
Make a walk, Mr. McDevitt.
Mr. McDevitt, you still bring up the kindergarten fee. I mean, that was a long time ago.
You, me, Mrs. Warren, we all were one year too late.
Oh, I was too.
You were, uh, yeah, yeah, I think you were too late too. Um, yeah, you, you benefited.
I got it from my youngest.
Yeah. Um, all right, anything else? I think we're good on transportation. Dr. Mealy, uh, the audit report for fiscal year 2021.
So this is, as you know, we do the annual end of year report for DESI and it's very important to them. Um, so important that that information is accurate because they use it for a lot of things, including the chapter 70 calculation, um, the reporting out of per pupil spending, all of those things that they commission and audit every year, um, of that end of year report. And so that was conducted, as it has been every year since I've been here and, and before that, uh, by Powers and Sullivan. Uh, this year there were no findings. Um, you, usually it's, it's a question about this being, this expense being put in a category that they think, oh, maybe it should be in that category instead and we'll make the switch. But, uh, this year there were no findings and, but we do have to report it to the school committee as informational.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Mealy? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. All right, we will move on to public comment. I'm not seeing any public, so we will move on to member comment. Um, and, uh, Ms. Picard, I will start with you.
I don't have any comments. Thank you so much.
All right, uh, Ms. Vitsky?
No comments.
Mr. Hicks?
Um, one, I would like to echo what Dr. Gilligan said before about our amazing nurses this Wednesday. Um, I know, um, in particular, Nurse Fuller at Atkinson has done a great job, um, helping to support my son. So thank you very much, Nurse Fuller and all the other amazing nurses. Um, and two, um, I've said it the last couple of times, but I'm really excited for town meeting and the opportunity to vote for, uh, moving these projects forward, um, and other projects that will help us see more school building happen sooner than later and increase our capacity and make sure that we have the right facilities for our kids. So everyone, please come out to town meeting and vote to support our schools.
Very well said. Ms. Petrowski?
Joe, you took my thoughts. So just say ditto. No, really, like, the nurses are fantastic. They've done a great job. I, where would we be without them? And yeah, town meeting, let's, everybody needs, need to get there and have your voices heard. This is your moment.
As Mark DeSalvo said, it is the truest form of democracy. So, uh, everyone gets a vote, a public vote and, uh, just really kind of one of those unique New England things, so. All right, with that being said, I would entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn regular session and enter into executive session, uh, master general law, chapter 30A, 21A, to conduct strategy with non-user, I can't speak, strategy with non-union personnel contract negotiations with no return to regular session. So is there a motion to adjourn and move into executive?
So moved. Does that work?
Yes, so moved, that works. Motion made by Ms. Petrowski. Yep. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I, I'm going to say, you said it as well, right? Yeah. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to say Mr. Hicks again. He's on a roll of just quick follow-ups. Uh, any comments? Seeing none, hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we will adjourn and move into executive session. Thank you.